The Ontario City Council, in accordance with the Governor's declarations of emergency, this meeting is being conducted by teleconference to limited in-person attendance. Is everybody okay? All right. This meeting is being live broadcast on local cable channel three as well as internet livestream on our city website. We appreciate your understanding during this unprecedented time of social distancing under the Governor's emergency orders. All documents for public review are on file with the Records Management City Clerk's Department. Anyone wishing to provide public comment or to address the council has been provided alternative means to do as well as the ability to call in live during appropriate times of the meeting. All public comments received by the established deadline for this meeting will be included as part of the official meeting record. In accordance with state law, remarks during public comment are to be limited to subjects within council's jurisdiction. Remarks on other agenda items will be limited to those items. So we'll begin with a roll call. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. As I read your name, would you please respond with here or present? Mayor Leon?
Here.
Mayor Fortham Dorce Perata?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wapner?
Here.
Councilmember Bowman?
Here.
Councilmember Valencia?
Here.
All councils are present and attending this meeting via Zoom.
All right, thank you. We'll begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Valencia. Everybody, please stand, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. In lieu of our invocation and recognition of the challenges that we're facing within our community and the nation, I ask that we take a brief moment of silence, about 15 seconds for you to direct your thoughts and prayers. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll call on the city attorney to provide a report in a closed session, Mr. Duran.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. This evening pursuant to the posted agenda, the council met to consider two items in closed session as listed on the agenda. One was a conference with labour negotiators, and second was a city manager's performance evaluation. The council received updates and provided direction with no reportable action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. So that takes us into the public comments. And Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For public comments tonight, we have several written comments. We have one emailed comment from Claudia Jimenez regarding homelessness. We also have four callers on the line and another written public comment for item number five, and a caller for item number five.
Okay, the caller for item number five is on consent calendar, so we'll take that call when we get to the consent calendar. But in the meantime, we'll go with the public comments that are on the phone. And so I believe, Madam City Clerk, you can begin to call as well. Let me just explain to those who are listening and you're in line to make your statements on public comment, it's best if you turn down or just turn off your live feed, whether you're watching, whatever you're watching on, because there's a delay. So when we call on you, it'll take a little while for you to hear us say it live, and then you won't answer, and then we'll assume you're not here. So it's just best if you turn away from whatever you're watching and turn the sound down and just listen on the phone until we're through with public comment. There's four, there are four people. So I'm speaking to Mr. Allred, Mr. Matheson, Mr. Coolidge, and Mr. Pace. Please turn your live feed down and get ready to speak in public comment. So with all of that, you'll be given three minutes and a one-minute remaining warning by the city clerk. And so we'll go ahead and begin with public comments. Madam City Clerk, would you call on our first speaker? Is that Karen? Are we having technical difficulties?
Yes, one second, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the first caller is Mr. Jesse Allred. Go ahead, Mr. Allred.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jesse Allred. I live on Amherst Avenue in Ontario Ranch, and I wanted to come to the board today to speak to you about an increase of crime in my neighborhood, especially that of two weeks ago when 50% of the homes in my street alone were vandalized or there was some sort of theft. The Ontario Police Department, which I am a huge fan of, they've been extremely communicative and receptive to my emails and calls, reported that from March 1 to September 28th, there has been 124 calls of service in my community alone, half of which are theft, and per the OPD, 0% of those have been solved. I am respectfully extremely disappointed in this board, especially that of Mr. Ochoa, because my numerous emails and phone calls have gone unresponded. The only city officials who have returned my calls have been the police department. Captain Burnick, Lieutenant Russell, Dolores Kwan, they have come, met with me face to face, and my community members, they have implemented ways to help me deter crime, they have talked my neighbors and myself through other options and avenues we could take, but I have heard nothing from the city council members, nothing. And today in the mail, respectfully from Councilwoman Perata, I get this beautiful flyer, "One of the goals is to make our communities, our neighborhoods, and schools safer." From Councilmember Valencia, another beautiful flyer, "Safety is our priority. I ask you, how is that? One of the 2020 goals remain to ensure the development of a well-planned, balanced, and safe, sustained community in Ontario Ranch. How is that happening? Because it seems like you're certainly not communicating with the people that you represent, your constituency, you are for the people, by the people, elected by us, but yet I cannot get a simple phone call back to even talk to you about the crime that's occurring in my neighborhood. We feel unsafe. My family, my kids, my neighbors, we feel unsafe. There are many ways, I'm gonna just name a quick three, because I'm not here just to gripe, I have some solutions.
One minute remaining.
You need to hold the developers accountable. If they're coming in here, and start with Christopher Holmes, if they're coming in here to make money out the backs of the city, then there's some things they can do to help deter crime. I would ask Christopher Holmes, what have you done? Do you leave the gate open? Do you have cameras? Do you have security? You would be shocked to hear some of those answers. Number two, communicate, simply communicate with me and my neighbors to let us know that you're here and listening. If it wasn't for the police department, I would be down beating on the door trying to get some sort of answers. And the next is, whatever the Ontario Police Department is asking for budget-wise, give it to them. They need the resources to be able to continue to do their job. I respectfully, to the closed session item of a performance evaluation of Mr. Ochoa, I hope these comments are taken into consideration. I would really appreciate some sort of response. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Allred. And Mr. Ochoa? I'd love to comment, but I can't. You can comment, but...
No, I will certainly follow Mr. Allred. I can tell you, I have, to my knowledge, I've never received a call from him, but that's okay. The idea is to work with folks and to reach out to the residents of the ranch. And so if we haven't responded somehow, some way, by all means, we apologize for that as an executive management team, but he can rest assured, I will be talking with him tomorrow morning. And we will report back to the council, because the OPD did have a community meeting last week, it was well-attended. There were folks there that were upset, as you heard the speaker allude to, they were primarily seeming to be upset, according to the representatives from OPD, at the builders. And if there's an issue where folks are taking advantage and poaching and pilfering construction materials, we have an obligation to work with folks and try to secure that. So by all means, I'll be reaching out to Mr. Allred.
All right, thank you, and I hope Mr. Allred heard you. Our next speaker is Mr. Aaron Matheson. Karen?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Matheson.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for letting me speak this evening. I come to you today with a grave concern for the spirit of democracy in our city. Ontario as a whole is one of the most transparent cities in the nation, both in government and in policing. That's why I come to you with this concern. Mr. Ruben Valencia has placed multiple cars, as shown in the photo I submitted through public record email, throughout the city. Unfortunately, according to his latest campaign filings, they do not exist. There are no expenditures for the vehicles, no expenditures for the advertising, no expenditures for the trailers. Not only that, his filings show no in-kind contributions for the vehicles, their wraps, the trailers, or their printed signs. By my calculation, this accounts for over $10,000 in campaign contributions not reported. This calls into question as to where he's receiving these funds for these items. If he's hiding money and purchases from the campaign finance records, what else is he hiding from the public? On top of these unreported contributions, he's decided that breaking city municipal code is the best way to park them. According to the municipal code, and I'm quoting the exact section, Title IV, Chapter VI, Article 10, Section 4-6.1008, Point A1 and B, I know it's a mouthful, but it states that no vehicle advertising may be parked on the streets in the city, and specifically states, first on the list, in fact, Euclid Avenue as a banned location. Yet daily, I see these eyesores of trailers and vehicles along Euclid between Holt and G. To top it off, he's parked them on overpasses over the construction area on the 10, in violation of state ordinance and endangering the drivers and the construction crews. You tout your service as a police officer and are famous for having orange construction signs that say Valencia at work.
One minute remaining.
But what these should say are Valencia, no transparency, and the law doesn't apply. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Matheson. Our next speaker is James Coolidge. Karen, can you get him on the line?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Coolidge. You're live at the meeting.
Hello, my name is James, and I was wanting to bring up this both to the city council and also to Mayor Leon directly. I found out somewhat indirectly that you are the president of the Board of Trustees for West Valley Mosquito Vector Control District. Briefly, I have concerns over the judge, pardon?
That's great.
Um, so briefly, I have concerns over the judgment and practices of upper management at West Valley Mosquito Vector Control District. I want to mention how it affected my wife, but there were also other questionable cases that were related to me as well, over her employment there. My wife is Vector Control Tech, too. At the district, last Friday, she received a write-up for listening to a webinar on mosquito ecology. Understand, technicians are allowed to listen to music, audiobooks, and podcasts when they're out in the field doing just physical work or driving from location to location. The initial assertion of the district manager at the write-up was that my wife was walking in the webinar, and she was written up for wage theft. It was then proven through video surveillance that she was indeed working at the time and pounding the pavement. This district manager, on Monday after the rebuttal, then claimed even though you weren't watching it, you were distracted because it had a visual component, even though on video she was not looking at the webinar. And she acknowledged that. There was no video evidence showing that she was distracted or even slow to inspecting the site, and Michelle even agreed to step down to a verbal warning. However, the warning, still in writing and in the file, contained the exact same verbiage of impending penalties as when faced with a written warning, up to and including dismissal for any other minor infractions. My wife is unjustly made to walk on eggshells at work for something that was never clear, that was not allowed, that is far less productive audio than what is typically allowed. There were others at our workplace that have also received dubious reprimands like this around times of new hires and performance reviews. Said questionable write-ups and reprimands were used to deny or even demote people or other technicians, and some people ended up like just leaving the district for other jobs.
One minute remaining.
Bottom line, I have concerns about, bottom line, I have concerns about the practices of management at West Valley. Both to my wife and other technicians, as the managers of the vector techs and the district manager seem to only find minor issues around budgeting or hiring times, or when a woman, my wife, takes two doctor's appointments with a week between them. As another example, if I have time, I wanted to point out how last year around their November performance review, they did an extremely thorough audit of all vehicles. When the techs compared notice afterwards, they found the audit criteria very inconsistent in application of unwritten and some informal policies not everyone knew about, used as feedback for why they were either delayed a promotion or delayed like a step up in pay. So it's very concerning, there's definitely some ethical questions behind it, and it doesn't seem like the spirit of the rules are being followed, only to keep everybody walking on eggshells there. So I wanted to bring that up to you because I didn't really know how to, I'm just, well, I'm not trying to be tearjerker, so I'm just, I'm not gonna try and be dramatic, so I can see the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Coolidge. I don't know, Mr. City Attorney, do you have any comment about those comments being made at this venue?
Exactly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. You're reading my mind. All due respect to the commenter, although he did make the connection that the mayor sits on the Vector Control Board, this is a city council meeting, and it is for conducting city business. Certainly, we encourage members of the public to reach out to their representatives, but I would encourage this gentleman to try the alternate venue of the Vector Control District itself. Certainly, the city council would not be able to discuss the issues that the caller has brought up, as they don't really pertain to the purview of the city council, with all due respect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Coolidge. Our next speaker is Anthony Pace. Karen?
Go ahead, Mr. Pace, you're live at the meeting.
Um, I'd like to share that this past Sunday, driving east and west on Fifth Street, by the park that runs between Fifth and Fourth, across the street from the Walmart, there was girls softball. I think this is great, that our community is trying to get back to what is as normal as possible. At the same time, what I observed as disturbing and I'm perturbed about is that 95% or more of the people were not practicing social safe distancing, nor were they wearing face masks. So on a go-forward basis, what can we residents do? Because that's a, that's just, I'm highly disturbed and concerned about this. I don't understand why we're having recreational sports for children where parents are not wearing masks and are not social distancing. And that's the only thing I wanted to bring up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pace, for that information. And Mr. Ochoa, do you have anything you'd like to direct staff on that or anything?
Certainly, yes, sir. We empathize with Mr. Pace's concern, some folks don't follow the rule. The state's guidance, and as followed by the county, allows folks to have drills, to do conditioning, and some limited amount of organized sports, but the complaints about tournaments and what have you really goes beyond the pale. One of the things that we're looking at right now, perhaps even for this weekend, would be to install barriers on the field that would preclude the use of the field as it's been demonstrated on repeated occasions over the last several weeks, to keep folks off the fields in the manner that Mr. Pace is identifying. You hate to have to do that, because it penalizes the whole community, but we do have, as I say, some folks who just are not playing by the same rules as everybody else. We'll be exploring that this week, and we'll keep you posted.
Yeah, and I'd just like to explain once again to the public, we're not, during public comment, we can hear you, but we're, the city council is not allowed by law to comment or to enter into a conversation with you over these things. Our city attorney and our city manager certainly can either define the rules or direct staff, and that's why I ask them to do what they want to do. Believe me, a lot of times, I would love to be able to comment, but it's just against the law. So that our silence does not mean a lack of interest concern or that we didn't hear you. So we'll move on. That was our last speaker to, to the public comment, so we'll move on. And Mr. City Manager, do you have anything for the agenda and review or any other materials?
Very quickly, under council matters, we would ask that you continue the appointment to the library board to your October 20th meeting, just so we can finalize a couple of details, but beyond that, no, sir.
Yeah, so that's at the end of the meeting, the council matters, appointment of the library board of trustees will be continued until the 20th, right?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. That brings us to consent calendar, and all matters listed under consent calendar will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the council requests an item to be removed from the consent calendar for a separate vote. We've already heard any public, excuse me. We don't have any body here, but we do have, oh, we do have a speaker to item number five, that's right. So before we take it up with the council, we'll go ahead and hear the speaker to item number five.
Mr. Mayor, we have one written comment from Louis Schmidt from Ask Me Local 3061, who states, "We support this item, and we thank the city for their commitment," and we have one caller.
Yeah, okay, so we'll take, we've already entered the written into the record, and we're, go ahead and take the caller on item number five.
Okay, our caller is Juan Roman. Go ahead, Mr. Roman, you're live at the meeting.
Hello, hello. Hello, City Council, Mayor, City Manager, my name is Juan Roman. I am a resident here in the city of Ontario for many years, maybe 20 years, and also I'm happy, I'm a happy employee. I am a resident here in the city of Ontario for many years, maybe 20 years, and also I'm a happy employee at the Integrated Waste Department. I was actually calling to give some positivity. I wanted to thank the city for the great job that they've done in our department with this whole coronavirus. You know, it has brought some unique circumstances, social distancing and all that good stuff. And from behalf of my department, I'm also the steward there, so I would like to say thank you for, you know, providing sanitizer, providing the proper PPE, providing everything we need in order to keep our community safe. As a resident, I appreciate that. And as an employee, I appreciate that as well. And, you know, I just wanted to make a quick comment and also let you guys know that us in the Integrated Waste Department, we understand the unique situation that the pandemic has brought. We understand what the deficit and as well the golden handshakes that have came along with it and reduction of staff. But we just wanted to reaffirm and reassure the council and the residents and the city of Ontario that, you know, we're very happy to serve. We're very happy to continue our high quality of customer service. And, you know, we just, we thank you guys and hopefully, you know, we will continue to work together very hard to make sure that the city stays clean and the city stays beautiful. And with your guys' great management, I'm sure that, you know, we'll end up there. I just wanted to take the time and thank you guys.
Well, thank you. You do a great job. Let me thank you all for what you do. So having heard all of the public comments, I'll open it up to the city council for discussion or motion of the consent calendar.
Move the item.
Okay, move by Councilman Bowman, second by Mayor Pro Tim Parada. We'll take a roll call vote. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Dorsey Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you, Madam City Clerk. That takes us to item number 12. Did you hear me?
Yes. This is, this item is to consider a resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for community facilities District Number 45, North Park and Countryside and related matters.
Okay, are there any, is there anybody to speak on the matter or any discussion from the council? All right, well, doesn't seem that way. Then I'll entertain.
I'll make the motion that we pass the resolution.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Bowman. Roll call vote. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Dorsey Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
Matter carries unanimously.
So having passed that conclusive proceedings for this evening concerning the issuance of special tax bonds for Ontario Community Facilities District Number 45, North Park and Countryside, takes us to staff matters.
Nothing at this time, sir. Nothing, sir.
All right, then we'll move on to council matters. And we've already decided not to take on the library board trustee point at this time. So we begin with our Mayor Pro Tim, Mr. Parada.
I'd just like to thank everybody for their cooperation and all the good works that they've been doing these past weeks with the reorganization, the golden handshakes, the COVID. I just, in watching the San Bernardino County website, the numbers are going up. The hospitalizations are going up, new cases are going up, so please, everybody, let's be careful out there. Let's, please do the social distancing and wear the mask. I sure would like to get this all cleaned up before the holidays, and so if everybody could just do that, then that would be great. So thank you.
Mr. Bowman?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Mr. Wapner?
I'm good, thanks.
Mr. Valencia?
I'm good as well.
Okay, well then, I'm just going to say that I think that given the situation that we're in and the restrictions that we all live in this time, I think that our city staff has done a great job in taking care of a lot of the areas that a lot of, oftentimes, they go unrecognized for. And it's certainly our solid waste department and the guys who go around, men and women who go around taking care of taking the debris and trash off our streets, have done a great job. And I see sometimes, especially on social media, there are always going to be complaints about the perfection of it all. And I think, I've been in some of the best cities in the world, in Southern California, and there's always going to be a degree of litter and debris. And I match Ontario with any of them as we go through our city streets and we see very, very little graffiti. It's painted out right away. Not a lot on the streets. We have an app that's very effective, the MyOntario app, and to be able to take care of pretty much anything that somebody sees. The reality is, is that we can't do it alone. City government is not the answer. I don't think government is ever the answer. And big government is definitely not the answer. Comes down to the people, the people, the community, people in the city to take pride and ownership of everything and to help us not only to be our eyes, but also to be our hands and feet. If you see something and you can take care of it, then do it. If you think it's so great that you need to call the city or the police or so, I mean, certainly the police need to handle law enforcement, but there are other things that you can call us to take care of. But what I want to make sure is that people know that under the restrictions of the finances that we have, it isn't just the deep pockets. We're not the federal government. We don't print our own money. We have to work with the money that we earn, that we have, and it's not as much as it's always been because of the COVID-19 issues that we face. Our city staff has done a phenomenal job of keeping things moving and making sure that people don't really feel the weight of having lost a lot during these dire times. So I would just want to tell our city staff, I appreciate you. I know we all do. For the great work that you do and the way that you take care of us when people don't see it necessarily. And we're not going bankrupt, and that has a lot to do with the quality of staff that we have from Mr. Ochoa, all the way down to whoever else is in the org chart. And I give you all my solid support. And the whole thing is, is that we don't always hear. Sometimes people think we hear everything. You know, a call is made here, a call is made there, and somehow it should have made it to me or to our city manager or the rest of the city council. We do respond when we hear, but we don't always hear. So maybe we just need to do a better job of putting our ear to the ground. I don't know. But all in all, I'm very thankful for the staff that we have. With all of that, I'd like to say we appreciate your interests and thank you for participating in our meeting by television, live stream on the web or by calling in. Our next regular scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, October 20, 2020. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for attending.